What's up everybody? Welcome to the eight one seven podcast. Man, what a week.
Yeah, what an understatement.
Yeah, it's uh sub zero out here.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to be back with you.
Have you seen Balto before? The dog I was about to train my dogs. You have my in-laws dogs here. We got like three dogs here. I was about to balto this.
Yeah, my, uh, my sister lives in or is moving back to Anchorage and this coming summer and I have family that live outside of Fairbanks, Alaska. And comparing temperatures was not, not fun this week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it was, it was crazy. But I'm glad, glad everyone, you know, we're, we're now down to like, I was, you know, looking at the tracker of power in Texas and it's like, we're down under like thirty five thousand, which is, which is good.
Yeah, down to basically just like storm damage.
Yep, yep. Thirty one thousand state outages. But wow, what um.
I think Fort Worth is almost back on track with water too. I think it's just the west side along Camp Bowie that uh is just waiting for those tests to get finished. So we're hopefully about at the end of initial immediate recovery and moving into long-term recovery, I guess.
And the weather this weekend though, it was almost like, almost wanted to cry. It was so beautiful.
Yeah, this, I mean, this coming week's gonna be one of the best weeks of weather that we have this year.
But even like the trees and all the streets just melting away the snow. It was almost just like, it was almost like an emotional, like that we were just crying away these tears of joy and all this water was just melting down the street. That's how I felt.
That I would say that's a good way to describe it.
I just feel like we needed some slow nineties R and B to like just really make that moment for me.
Yeah, so today we, we obviously just lived through a pretty dramatic and traumatizing uh week. And so we're gonna talk a little bit about what moving forward uh could and will look like. Highlight some businesses and organizations that have really stepped up in response and then uh to sort of move away from having to think too much about it. We're past the last day of filing for the local elections coming up this May. And so we're just going to run through all of the candidates for uh all eight city council seats and the mayoral seat, which is the ninth city council seat. And just give brief high level, this is whose website we were able to find, uh because sometime for a lot of the candidates, maybe they don't have one up yet. Maybe it's just not very well search engine optimized. And if we could find information on them, just a brief, like, these are the few things they list on their website to hopefully encourage you to figure out who is running in your district and get to know them, figure out how to reach out to them. Yeah, what do you, what do you want to get started with?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I guess uh for me, I think it's just like, let's hit the practical, like things people should know. One, I hope everyone's doing well, like legitimately, you know, I know it hit people very differently and, and rolling blackouts wasn't really rolling at all. It was either someone was rolling with the punches and some were not. And so uh I do feel for uh, this was not an equitable shut, you know, shutdown of electricity. So anyone in Fort Worth who dealt, who's dealing with stuff, even water, I mean, the bigger narrative around there with water, there's tons of things going on. But I, I think the big thing for me is like, you know, if you were impacted in any way, there's financial assistance that is available for homes and businesses at www dot disasterassistance.gov. Or you can call the one eight hundred six two one three three six two number. Um, and that's four seventy counties in Texas, even though there's like two hundred and fifty four counties. That Governor Abbott is like, he's trying to stretch it more, but for now it's seventy and Tarrant is one of them. So um definitely and Denton in Dallas. Uh, so definitely if uh you were impacted, um, take advantage, you know, pipes, whatever, you know, things like that.
Yeah, so what that comes from is uh President Biden declared a state of emergency, which allows for federal funding, uh sort of mobilizes FEMA into being able to recoup uh losses for home damage, uh hotels that you had to pay for that were price gouging you. All of that. Uh, I, I went through the process. We don't have hot water right now. Um, I went through the process yesterday. It took maybe like five minutes to set up my account. Make sure you get email and text notifications, uh because they'll put more like documents in your account to fill out. But make sure you do that. If you have suffered any sort of damage at all, take advantage of at least the chance of recouping any losses, uh insurance deductibles, uh anything like that. But I, I feel like they were pretty quick to spring into action in at least federally in getting generators to, they landed in Tarrant County. I think most of them were headed to Houston and Austin. Um, but that's definitely like the first practical thing you should do is go to that website and sign up to make sure you can recoup some losses.
Yep. What is your like uh throughout this week, what is the thing you're most upset about? There's a lot of things you can be upset about. It could be ERCOT, it could be politicians, it could be, there's a lot of things you could be upset about. Yeah. What is, what is the thing that really you feel like?
Um, I think the
Boiled your skin, no pun intended.
The one, the lack of preparation, um, but two, the initial response, which I, I think reflects the lack of preparation of hey, we're all in the heat of this right now. You wake up in the morning and see that Governor Abbott has been on Fox News spreading utter crap about the causes behind this, instead of actually trying to fix things. And you know, he didn't, he never contacted the mayor of any of the major uh democratic-run cities. Pulling a page out of Trump's book of only helping people that vote for you instead of your entire constituency. I, I think that that was just very reflective and the finger pointing of like, we're gonna do a full investigation into ERCOT, even though Abbott is the one who appoints the heads or the board of the PUC, which is what regulates ERCOT. It is, it's like the, the meme, I honestly forget what show it comes from, where it's the guy in the hot dog suit pointing fingers and saying, we're all trying to find the guy who did this. Like I, I feel like I could have just posted that in response to every single article that came out this week.
Yeah, and I just thought, yeah, to me, yeah, we, we, we had signs of this. That's the crazy thing. It's like, hey, like, you know, there was a lawsuit in, in twenty one, uh twenty eleven when the Super Bowl and we had the outage there, a federal report saying like, hey, there's like, we need to be more uh like proactive here.
Right.
Like, so that's, that to me is like, yeah, I think um, a part of me though is, I mean, cause he also knew the weather was coming, maybe what, a week before? I guess it's always hard to predict the weather, you know, this, so I don't know, it's, I, the odds of something like this happening again, seems like it can become more common with just the weather, weather patterns changing as well.
I mean, that's like, that's the thing. We knew that it was going to be cold and obviously like precipitation can vary. But like I wasn't here yet in twenty eleven. I moved here in July of twenty eleven, but I was here in twenty fifteen when this happened. And it was like, oh, great. There's snow on the ground. It's been here for a few days. Like this is fun. We can play in the snow. That's honestly what my expectation coming into this past week was, because there wasn't anything to tell us otherwise. There wasn't anything to say, hey, eight million Texans are gonna be without drinking water.
Yeah.
Because there was just no messaging put out about how bad this could actually get.
Yeah, and I think what's crazy is how um close uh Bill Magnus, the chief executive officer for ERCOT said about, he has like nine people who are like, are on, like, who are on call with the grid and figuring out like decisions. And how close we were for like a statewide, months-long shutdown. Like you, you imagine?
No, I like, I literally, I literally can't comprehend it.
Like someone, yeah, someone who's white collar, who could maybe have privileges. I was like, what do I even do? Do I, do I, do I go to a, do I try to find an Airbnb in, in, in Arizona, New Mexico, like, and like live there for a couple of months? Like, what do I do? Yeah. And, and that's people with resources. I, I mean, it would have been, it would have been war, war, like a war zone in here. Like, it would have been crazy.
Yeah, I, I truly can't comprehend. Like I've read, I've read that article a few times and I honestly can't comprehend uh that we were that close. I mean, we, so we fortunately did not, we're, we somehow didn't lose power the whole time. We didn't turn on a light in our house for two or three days.
Yep.
Which is obviously significantly better than having lost power. But literally there was like a fear of, I'm honestly scared to plug something in or turn on a light, because I feel like it might shut down our house.
Yep.
And it's like, oh, our fears were so much more justified than I actually could have imagined.
Yep. And then just the stories that you hear um of how people passed away and stuff like that, what happened in Sugar Land.
Yeah, the eleven-year-old in Conroe.
Yeah, that, yeah, and stuff like that. That's just, that's just so hard.
Then what's his name that uh went on and was like Texans would sat, like Texans want to go through this.
Perry, yeah, Perry, oh yeah, wasn't it, wasn't he was like, oh, we don't want democratic federal government in our, we rather take the long haul.
Yeah, which now the two politicians that have, you know, stepped up the most are Beto and AOC. Beto's in El Paso, which is not on the grid of Texas.
Yeah.
Uh, AOC is in New York City. Um, and I, I just don't know how you can look at the two parties the same right now. Like there, that's the, that is the really, the hard thing for me to comprehend coming out of this uh is how you can look at these two groups of people. One of which is putting out thousands and thousands and thousands of phone calls every day to do wellness checks on people. The other is, has raised over three million dollars using her platform, flown to Texas, rallying people to sign up to volunteer at the Houston Food Bank. And the other one flew to Cancun, uh which honestly, I'm a little bit disappointed that we caught on to this so fast, because I wish we would have gotten like shirtless Ted hanging out at the beach picture and then figured it out, because I feel like we could have gotten even more funny content out of it.
Yeah, I love.
But dunking, dunking on Ted Cruz was a great pick-me-up for the end of the week.
Yeah, I, I love um, I love the walk of shame back from the airport. It was like, it was like, I was like, he, I think he like, is, is he expecting a slow clap from everybody here? Like this is, this is for sure a walk of shame and people were just like taking photos of him. Like you imagine like heading somewhere for a trip and you're just like seeing Cruz walk a shame down the airport.
Well, and I love all, all of the people in that group text message, just totally throwing them under the bus. That, I really enjoyed that. Poor their dog, Snowflake, apt name, one for the weather, two for the type of person that Ted Cruz is. Poor Snowflake being left home alone. I, we haven't heard that he's not okay. So I, I hope that means that the dogs are, made it through.
But going on to the um, the like, the political language narrative around this stuff is when, when California had the rolling
Yeah.
Like grid stuff back in the day, um, that was the move where Arnold Schwarzenegger got elected.
Right, yeah, they, they pulled the, or they made the, they fired the governor. I'm blanking on the word for that. Enron obviously got Enron. Um, and yeah, Arnold Schwarzenegger was elected.
So I think it's, I don't know, I think there's definitely um, and, and what's also crazy is I also link it back to Trump going to Puerto Rico. And, and there's a lot of hate or like not hate, but people are saying, well, why Biden hasn't come? Why has Biden haven't showed up? Think about how for, or inspiring that would be if Biden was here to like show that everything's gonna be okay.
Well, he is coming this week.
Yeah, okay, so, so there, that's, so that's good to know, cause I didn't know that. But like, I think it was interesting to see like, that's what like, I mean, like, I think like the whole way how quick AOC did it was very, very, I don't know who her team is, but that was a super awesome and inspiring move.
Yeah.
To see uh Hermit activate so quickly on it.
Yeah.
But no, that's good that, you know, Biden's come this week. I mean, even though I, I, I'm not mad if he was or was not, um, either way, I mean, it wasn't like something like that. Uh, I mean,
For sure.
He took action, you know, with, with uh
Yeah, the problem is, the problem is that the, the federal action then goes to the state and needs to be executed by the state. And the state is still run by Governor Abbott, uh unfortunately. And that is why if we've seen a lack of generators that the federal government has given, or a lack of resources, or a lack of mobilization of the National Guard, that's controlled by the state. And so it's, yeah, I do think, I do think the federal government um mobilized fairly quickly. The bummer is that, like you said, Beto or AOC's platforms mobilize more quickly, which just kind of shows where we're at right now of instead of depending on the federal government, when something happens, you have to depend on GoFundMe and hoping that you get lucky and go viral.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's a sad place for us to be in right now. Um, because government is supposed to help people.
And a positive too, though, too, is it's, it's gonna create a lot of conversation around climate, around energy.
Yeah.
Like this is
This could be a national tipping point.
Yeah, and you thought, we thought, you know, Beto, if, if he does run for something against like Abbott or whoever does, I feel like at this point, I'm, I'm convinced that a Republican can run against Cruz for Senate. Like it don't even have to be a Democrat.
Primary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think uh, but um, he, you know, we, we had the, he had the ammo of like the coat, like COVID and how we handled COVID.
Yeah.
And, and, and which I didn't think was strong enough, because like, I just don't think Texans care about that story.
Right.
But energy, Texas cares about that story. So um, yeah, and it's just crazy to see the whole blaming wind and frozen uh like when, like that's come on.
Like less than ten hours after you literally posted on Twitter that the failure was oil and natural gas. Yeah.
Yeah.
So kind of like, what, what happens now? Like what, how do we move forward from this? Obviously in twenty twenty-two is, you know, opportunity to elect different state politicians and maybe hold some people accountable for this. Texas, like obviously being a Republican-run state, we're not going to Enron anybody.
Yeah.
Like these investigations for accountability are going to be just that, like quote unquote investigations. One thing that Abbott is fast-tracking in the state legislature, which is meeting right now, uh is requiring winterization. I don't really know what that's
That means.
Yeah, what it means, what it's gonna do.
Because I think the other big, the, usually the conversation around the grid is about the hot summers, which is, so, so yeah, so it's, I don't know what winterization means. And, and then the, then the philosophy comes on is how far we invest, cause it's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, to me, that sounds like a just sort of patronizing, like give something for the GOP to say that they did in response to this.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't think that it actually is going to mean much, because like you said, I, how far are they going to go in requiring it? This year they did inspections via Zoom. Um, so I would assume no inspections.
Is that Ted Cruz tweet about where he says, I believe in climate change?
No, that was fake.
Okay, I was like, man, that would
Yeah, that was photoshopped.
Yeah, that would have been crazy. That's why I was like, you can never, you can never share tweets these days, because you just don't know if they're ever real.
Yeah, that one, at least like
But like change.org, I thought, a change on Instagram, I thought posted, which is why I was like, is, is this real?
Yeah, no, a lot of, I saw something comparing the number of retweets of it being posted versus it being corrected. And that's just how fake news is spread this whole time. Fortunately, that's not like a super harmful form of fake news, but it is still worth correcting that that is not real.
Glad I brought it up. Glad I brought it up.
Yeah. Um, what do you, I mean, what do you, what would you like to see going forward?
Um, to me, honestly, I, I personally felt like I got lucky. Um, and personally felt like I wasn't fully impacted. I was out of the, out of the state at the beginning of the week. So
You were the, you were the anti-Cruz. You were cruising back into DFW.
Yeah, I was like, man, I'm coming back. You know, it was like, I was like sixty-five. It was like in a, I was like in a heated pool. It was ninety-four on Tuesday and then I flew back in and I was like, whoa, what the heck is this? So um, I really don't, I, I feel like I still need to process a lot of it. And um, honestly, I'm more, I, I think what, to me, what's inspiring is just like how our businesses have helped out, you know, with, with our breweries, with water.
I mean, Funky Town Fringe.
Yeah, Funky Town Fridge.
Like they uh, they were
Six hundred people.
They were mentioned in the New York or in the LA Times.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, mutual aid groups across the state were really highlighted and uh I'm glad that, I mean, it, it's only been a few months for Funky Town Fridge. Like this could easily, we could have easily been in a place of, oh, like who do we go to right now?
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. So I think that was all super inspiring and uh cool to see. And I think that's probably um, the part that's positive. And um, I don't know, I don't know how much a local officials can do. Like I'd feel like I didn't see a lot from our mayor and people say really anything like to mobilize.
Yeah.
On TV or
It seemed very sparse on social media and yeah, I, I would say like for the majority of anybody elected in Texas other than a very small handful of people, like it was a, it was not the best week. Which obviously like, they were all still dealing with this also, um, not to provide an excuse like this is their job, this is what we elected them to do. But a lot of them were dealing with this same
Yeah.
Potential trauma that we were.
Yep.
So it was definitely, uh, it was really encouraging to see how businesses stepped up. Because for all of us, it was like, okay, I'm gonna go up and check on my place and maybe we have power, maybe we have water, maybe we don't. I don't really know.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and so I also think like, all the people who moved here from like, you know, Texas is on this wave of everyone from California, New York are moving to Texas. It's like, man, then you get hit. I don't know, you know, magic, you imagine you move to Texas your first week and it's like, this is what you, you get hit with. But yeah, no, uh, hopefully, hopefully everybody's doing well. And I think, um, yeah, let's talk about um, the local elections.
Yeah, well, also real quick, highlighting all of the uh, the reporters that were also dealing with this, dealing without having power.
I saw that they got together.
Yeah, they were busting out all of these stories and information. Um, I mean, I, I feel like they carried the load for a number of people both locally and statewide in making sure that people understood what was happening on the ground here, getting out information about where resources were, how to get to them. Yeah, so all of you from Texas Tribune, Star Telegram, Dallas Morning News, um, Fort Worth Weekly, Fort Worth Magazine.
I think, I would love like, I think the coolest people in our city are journalists. I'm sold. They're just coolest people. I would, you, you imagine you get like Sam, you get, you get Luke, you get all these, you know, Cal, you just get them all together in a room and like, they could, they could probably sell philanthropy of like, come hang out with us, VIP journalist party, you know, come hang out with us if you want to be cool and I'm like
Like to us.
Yeah, yeah. I'm like, yo, I'll go, I'll come hang out, cause it just seems like everyone's just like, they're, it's, it's like, it's like they're hustling, they're working hard, but then like, you could, you feel like they all enjoy each other. And I just think that's, that's just a cool um, work environment, I guess. It seems like everyone, I don't, I mean, working for news probably is awful from like the business side, but like having each other to go through it, seems like there's some true camaraderie.
For sure.
That's just like awesome to like glimpse from Twitter.
Yeah, well, shout out to all of you for, for doing what you've done this week and staying up until two and three AM to continue getting us information. Yeah, let's move into local elections. Um, so we're just gonna rattle off, for mayoral, I feel like we've covered a, a lot. Um, but
I do have some things there though, that I feel like I wanna get off my chest.
To uh rattle off the names of everybody running, because it is more than just the, I would, the big four quote unquote. Alphabetically, Brian Bird, Daniel DC Caldwell, Myleene George, Mike Haynes, Cedric Kenyenda, Matty Parker, Steve Pennett, Deborah Peoples, Chris Rector and Ann Zeta. So it, it's a crowded race. Um, yeah, what do you have to add?
I am so afraid of all this Dr. Bird stuff all over the place.
I, I haven't seen it.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen, I've seen a couple posters, but not
I feel like that's all I see. And maybe it's just haunting me, you know, when you think of something, your worst nightmare, and then you just see it all the time.
Yeah, I mean, that is the, he, he's got the dollars.
Yeah, yeah. And, and he was, I mean, he was knocking on doors.
Yeah, in our, in our neighborhood.
Yeah. And I'm like, which one? I respect the hustle, like that you're doing that, like this early. I respect, I'll respect that. But I'm, I'm just, everyone else is being so passive. I feel like he's trying to go out here and win the game. Like I just feel like he's very, like, I'm just worried. That's what I'm worried about is all the signage, all the, like, the hustle, like you're out here on a Sunday morning knocking on doors in seven, six, you know, one oh three, like
Yeah.
Like, that's, that's crazy. And so um, yeah, so I'm kind of like, I don't know what we have to do, but we have to figure out, like, get people to realize the seriousness of like, this can't happen.
Yeah, I mean, forty thousand people voted last time, so
And everyone else, I feel like is being quiet. Like, I feel like everyone else's Twitter is like, oh, let's retweet like where to get water locations.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, like they're being nice.
Which that's helpful for this past week.
Yeah.
But yeah, how do we kick into action? Like we're basically to March.
Yeah.
Um, so you've got March and April to really hit it into high gear.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I feel like he's hitting in high gear. And granted, he has all the funding. But
Maybe he's playing the game too early.
Yeah, maybe. That's, hopefully, hopefully, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep, keep track of it. But it did get popular, the race, and I don't know how, how um, how people are going to mobilize uh with such a big race. I was talking to some, you know, I was thinking more and more about it and I'm, I think I'm getting, you know, I'm personally, I think I'm getting closer to a candidate. I think we should have our like, maybe our endorsement show when we get closer to May.
Yeah, we can do that.
Or we could just endorse, like, we can first like just do a, you know, a petition, anyone but bird, like that would be cool too. Like I'm down to like figure something out around that. Um, but anyways, did you go through those websites?
I did not for mayor. Um, honestly, there, that's a part of the intriguing thing about local elections is not everybody has a website, even not everybody has a Facebook page.
Yeah.
And so I, the, the four candidates that have sort of been highlighted so far as having the bigger followings all have those resources. But there are a number of people behind them that, like we said, only forty thousand people voted last time. I, I guess realistically, we're probably looking at a runoff this time.
Yeah, for sure.
But how many votes is it gonna take in that first election to get into the runoff when you're split between ten candidates?
Yeah, and a lot, yeah, yeah. And a lot of them don't, I feel like this is a great opportunity for like a Squarespace or somebody to like create a PR campaign around like, we help local officials set up government websites. Like that just seems like a brilliant play.
Yeah.
And, cause it's not that hard to create a website.
Right.
And like host a website.
Yeah. Or even, I don't, I don't know if you've heard of the organization Run for Something, um, but even they provide the resources to like get, like they help you get a website up and going. Like they help you get the people around you that you need, connect you with people. Um, but I, I think it's a little more geared at younger, at the younger crowd, trying to get them involved.
Do you know who runs the Vote Fort Worth Instagram? Have you seen that?
I don't think so.
It's super cool. You should check it out. It's super cool.
Vote Fort Worth.
Let's dive in.
Yeah, so Fort Worth City Council at this point is made up of nine seats. That's eight districts plus the mayor. So District Two, which is uh includes the stockyards, it sort of goes from like Main Street headed north, does a little wiggly around Saginaw. like Main Street headed north, does a little wiggly around Saginaw. Um, right now there are, or I guess, yeah, right now people could still drop out. That's happened a little bit already. There's four candidates. The incumbent is Carlos Flores. Then you've got Theodore Gray, Jennifer Sardui and Juan Sixtose. I was able to find websites for a couple of them. Carlos Flores obviously has one as a city council member and an incumbent.
With a Texas hat. Look at that.
Yeah. With the big time cowboy hat in front of the stockyards. Uh, he doesn't have a ton of information on there. I, I feel like that was kind of consistent through the incumbents was kind of running on being the incumbent. And giving some loose verbiage around what they've done on city council. Um, so he is engaged on diverse fronts, devoting time and energy to public service and betterment of his community. He's former chair, chairman of the Building Standards Commission, which is obviously important in the stockyards with a lot of historical buildings. Stockyards Redevelopment Task Force, City Charter Review Committee, a few other things. The, the things he lists first for District Two are areas of public safety, accountability, education, childcare, homelessness and affordable housing, parks and community facilities. It's kind of just like a laundry list of terms that, uh, he doesn't have a ton of detail around, but his contact information is on his website. So that's Carlos Flores, FWD2.com. If you're in his district and want to learn more about him, he's got a phone number and email on his website. Then the other, uh, website we were able to find was for Jen Sardui. Uh, hers is a little more specific. She has four things that she is really focused on. Uh,
Great, great site.
Yeah. Housing is greater than harassment. We can end homelessness in Fort Worth. Collaboration is greater than clout. We can make city hall work for us. Growth, growth is greater than gentrification. We can invest in communities without displacement and justice is greater than jails. We can transform public safety in Fort Worth.
This, this is, she, it sounds like she needs to be running for mayor over here. This is like the best, this is like the best language I've seen.
Yeah. I mean, it's super detailed.
This is the first time I've seen it, by the way, for people who are like seeing me be dramatic, but it's, it's really well done and like great verbiage and thoughtfulness. I just, I feel like, yeah, that's really cool.
Yeah. Sardui for DistrictTwo.com. Um, yeah, that's her, her website. I, I would, she's also got a donate and a contact link on there. Um, but she provides some really concrete ideas of what she wants to do.
Yeah. Really impressive.
I don't know the like incumbent reelection rate for city council. I imagine it's pretty high.
Yeah.
But she looks like a real challenger.
Yeah.
Um, and then Fort Worth Weekly has actually highlighted the race for District Two already. Um, and they have a, a brief Q and A with all four of the candidates give at least some response. So for the two that we haven't heard from, uh, Gray answering the question, what would you like to see the city as a whole improve on? Uh, talked about primary and secondary education in underprivileged communities, police community relationship and property taxes. And Sixtose, uh, talked about funding for public safety, uh, developing proper and up to date training tactics and investing in new tools and non-lethal weapons for police. And developing a system of de-escalation, improved communication transparency, uh, continue reducing taxes while supporting park and historical preservation. So that's on Fort Worth Weekly. It was dated February 17th. So you should be able to find it pretty close to the homepage. Yeah, that's District Two. I would imagine just based on having websites that this will probably be a closer race between Flores and Sardui, but, uh, like we said, it doesn't take a ton of votes.
I just followed Jen Sardui on Instagram because that was very impressive. You did all the homework on this district stuff. So this is, I'm just first impression and I'm not going to lie, I was blown away. She, she seems like she needs to be on the pod.
That seems like, I mean,
That seems like we can make that happen.
We'll reach out to anybody, anybody who wants to like, we'll reach out and figure it out.
And we've had some people do that. So we're, you know, we're, we're looking to as, you know, Sunday podcasters, we're trying our best to, uh, provide the schedule and, and be able to be on top of it. But we should definitely reach out because just the language alone on that website was just like, you're thinking at the, you're thinking about this the right way.
It was really purposeful.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. Love it.
Do you want to run through District Three? So District Three is, sorry, the interactive map is like not that helpful, uh, online. District Three includes Ridgely Hills, Benbrook, sort of does some wigglies out closer to Alito, but doesn't get to Alito. Um, and doesn't quite get up to Lake Worth, uh, and then stays north of Wedgewood. So that's District Three. And that's a crowded race. So this is one where there is not an incumbent running. Um, I believe that this is Dr. Bird's district.
That, that looks like it makes sense.
I, yeah, I'm pretty sure that this is Dr. Bird's district. Um, so candidates, Michael Caseres, Tanya Carter, Michael Crane, Daniel Double T Fatori, he has two Ts in his last name, uh, Andy Gallagher, Katie Johnson, Ann Lowe, Adrian Devine Smith. Uh, I only found a couple of websites for this one. Again, if you're listening and we missed it, uh, let us know and we can, we can try and get that out there. But this was just from, you know, doing a little Google searching on everybody. So Michael Crane, uh, he's got a pretty fancy website, uh, nice and red and blue. Known for his quick responsiveness and creative solutions. Crane has played a crucial role in improving streets, parks and addressing crime as District Three Director. Yes. So he's the deputy director to Dr. Bird. Um, if you live in that district and you've tried reaching out to them recently, he has probably been fielding your, uh, questions instead of Dr. Bird. I don't know where that like weighs on the scale of being kosher to Ted Cruz, meeting with the impeachment defense attorneys, uh, during their breaks, but it's somewhere on that scale. The fourth things that he lists on his homepage that he supports, reducing property taxes, increasing public safety, improving roads and transportation, promoting economic development. Um, he doesn't have an about page. So there, there's not like a way to go into more detail. There is a way to sign up to contact him. Um, you can endorse him if you want to, and you feel fancy like that. Uh, you can be a, a trailblazer. You can get a yard sign. You can be a volunteer or you'd like to host coffee for his team with your neighbors and friends. Um, yeah.
Well, I mean, well executed.
Yeah, it is a really great website.
Yeah. And, um, but yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a great website. But it makes, but it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. He's got a lot of resources behind him. Um, and then the other one that I could find was for Katie Johnson. She's lived in District Three for 31 years, graduated from Western Hills in oh seven. Went on to TCC and then to UTA, bachelor's in political science, minor in history. It looks like she's working on getting her JD in law. Uh, she has community work with Tarrant County Union Gospel, Junior Women's League, establishing freedom voters, uh, which is aimed at increasing voter education and turnout, obviously important in a race like this. Uh, her goals include a realistic reallocation of district funds to help improve neglected areas and infrastructure. Create designated areas for youth activities and opportunities, implement small business assistance, address racial disparities, create Las Vegas Trail and Como Community Revitalization Programs, improve public transportation, decrease crime statistics while enabling transparent communication between residents and district representatives. And she's got some great hot buttons for more details on those, uh, action items. Um, yeah, I mean, she again, seems like a, a very legitimate candidate. Not that they all aren't legitimate, but it's,
Yeah.
You have an extra, you, you already have a, a step up when you can find your website. So that's Katie for DistrictThree.com. Yeah. Any thoughts on those two?
Yeah. You know, unfortunately for me, it's like, you know, the, the, the crane one, you know, just kind of, I mean, the problem is like, you know, like, the problem is like you get one guy with a cowboy hat and then you get like Jen, which did, I didn't have a picture of Jen, but like it was, I could tell it was a progressive website. You could tell like, has like the AOC-ish vibes to it, right? But like just the messaging, um, and then Crane's like has, like they, they all, branding's important and he's on his brand. Um, and then the other lady seems like an academicist, you know, like someone who's degreed. And so like I'm, I'm interested to see more, um, like hopefully there's more ways to get her narrative rather than a lot of that long text or and stuff like that.
Yeah, absolutely. And this district includes Como, uh, which is a, a population that could be mobilized to, to vote with somebody who is actually invested in their wellbeing. So that, that, that's definitely a wild card. If somebody can go into Como, work with a lot of the, the leaders and people there, show that they really care about them and actually mobilize them to go vote. Because if, if 40,000 people vote in the general election and you're one of eight city council elections, like you're at 5,000 plus or minus, you know, 2,000 votes maybe. And so you need 2,500 votes to win. Como's a big community. Uh, she went to Western Hills. That's a big community right there. Who knows?
That'd be awesome. Yeah.
Uh, District Four. So this, uh, this is a, a hard district to describe. It is west or no, east of 35, going directly up 35 from essentially downtown to basically Keller. It looks like it goes about two miles east. Um, and then sort of wraps around underneath Halton City and Richland Hills. Uh, this is a, a very interesting looking district. Um, and is another one that does have an incumbent. That's Carrie Moon, uh, our resident DUI guy. Who doesn't want to take account for that. Uh, so Carrie Moon is running for reelection. You also have Jorge Chavez, Christie Hanhart, Max Stryker and Tara Wilson. And again, I only found two websites in this one. Um, one is Carrie Moon's that like really doesn't give.
It's like a comic.
Yeah. I mean, this is like, this is like if you were assigned in college to write a two-page essay. And you just put a big block of text and maybe tried to like add an extra space behind the period to make it go longer.
Yeah.
I, I don't really want to read it. Like I look at this and I'm like, I would rather read a, a book or an actual news article. Um,
And just so you gotta know is Carrie Moon, the DUI guy, you know, that's all you gotta remember. When you're voting here, you're like, oh man, there's a lot of options, but always remember DUI guy.
And he wouldn't say sorry. And he didn't even apologize for it.
Yeah.
He was like,
You didn't have to.
He said, nah, like I didn't hurt anybody. So that's our thoughts on Carrie Moon. Uh, Tara Wilson, um, her slogan is listening to the heartbeat of the district.
Love it.
Representation matters. Everyone deserves a fair chance to succeed. Uh, major decisions should be made by the community members of Fort Worth. Our elected officials should come from the communities they represent. Uh, she likes to be Latina. Um,
What is, what is your, like, you know, it's depressing about looking at this with you?
What?
Is like, we clearly know which ones we like, but what is the, what is the over under of like, so let's pick the person we want to win each district. We won't do it on this pod because we don't have enough time. And then watch what the over under is on how many we actually get right.
I don't want to answer that. And it all comes down to voter turnout. Like if
Yeah.
The communities that these people truly try to represent turn out to vote. I think we would go like nine for nine, maybe eight for nine.
Yeah.
But that tends to not happen. And so we're going to go somewhere like three for nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. VoteTaraWilson.com. Uh, she, she does have a, a great, easy to read, big, bold, bullet pointed, uh, website where you can also reach out to her and learn more about her.
Shoot. Seems like another one we need on the pod.
Yeah. Tara Wilson, we're coming for you.
Yes.
District Five. So this is, this includes Stop Six. It looks like it includes some of Meadowbrook, but I can't really tell what part. Uh, and then it, it, okay. So this sort of looks like the state of Maryland if it didn't have the big like right line that goes down it. Honestly, I didn't realize that all of this was even part of Fort Worth.
That's crazy.
Almost gets up to DFW Airport, running like south of 183. And north of North Arlington underneath Ullis. Um, but this is the Stop Six District, which definitely carries a big load, uh, in the mayoral race, because that's where I've seen all of Deborah Peoples signs. So incumbent Gina Bivins, uh, then you've got Antonio Twin Harris, Marticia James, Richard Vasquez and Bob Willoughby. I found three websites on this one. Uh, Gina's, um, talks about why she's running, uh, continued leadership and transparency and has a, an easy way to contact her, uh, GinaBivins.com. She spells that with a Y G Y N A. Um, definitely encourage you to, to reach out to her if she represents you already. Um, and then to, to learn what her goals might be for reelection. Um, Marticia James, I couldn't find a specific website for her, but she is on ActBlue. Um, yeah, it doesn't, it, it doesn't give details on who she is, but she does have an ActBlue, uh, website. So if you're familiar with ActBlue, you can search for Marticia, M A R apostrophe T A Y S H I A James. And you should be able to find her for city council District Five on there. That's something you, I mean, there, there really are only a, a few candidates that are on ActBlue. So that's something unique about her. Um, and may help her ability to fundraise. And then Ricky Vasquez, uh, so his, he believes in protecting the rights for the, for District Five. He's an advocate for mental and emotional wellbeing of youth through various developmental programs, believes in keeping local and local business and wants to reinforce that through community economic growth. Stands for people building and developing their own community while aiding and derailing gentrification in neighborhoods and making sure there are affordable housing options. Obviously that's a, a very big thing in Stop Six, uh, especially as development is going to start there. Yeah. Has the opportunity to, to donate, follow him on social media. Uh, this is a, I, I mean, this is a pretty solid website for
Yeah.
Somebody who seems like they're really bootstrapping this.
Yeah, yeah. Love the dramatic photo where he's in color in the, the like streets, black and white.
Yeah.
Like that effect.
Uh, okay. District Six. You'll probably notice that the incumbent districts are significantly less crowded. Uh, which in general, that's just how it's going to go. People running against an incumbent know they have less likelihood to win. District Six is currently represented by Jungus Jordan and that includes Wedgewood, uh, south headed towards Crowley. Uh, so, so really south Fort Worth. And there's just three people, Jungus Jordan, Tessa Leggett and Jared Williams. Jordan's website literally has nothing on it. It's, it's got home in contact. So if you need to reach out to him, you can get his email and campaign office. Uh, but that is quite literally the only thing on the website. Jared Williams has a, a really powerful video, DrJaredWilliams.com. Um, and I mean,
Wow, it looks amazing.
Yeah. I mean, this could, this like actually seems like an incumbent that could get beat. I think District Two and here are probably two of the biggest ones that we're looking at. Um, daring to challenge the status quo. Yeah. He seems like a, also seems like another great guy for the podcast.
Yep. Already messaging him. I'm staying quiet here because I'm just messaging these people and say, hey, you want to come on the pod? But I also want to give us a shout out. You know, we're 50 minutes in, we're going through these one at a time. And if you're still on here doing this with us, I think this is awesome because this is the hard work and I think. And I think this is the work that I think why most people don't turn out and vote. Most people feel uninformed. And I'm always a believer that if it's hard to listen to or hard to find, it's because they don't want us to. And so thanks for eating your broccoli today with me and Jimmy. Jimmy, keep continuing.
Yeah. Hopefully, uh, just this hour can help do a lot of the homework for you and make it easier. District seven, this is the, this is the, probably the big one, I would say. Um, this is where Dennis Singleton is retiring, um, and it includes like Eagle Mountain Lake, Lake Worth, heads up north includes Hazlet. And then sort of wiggles its way past River Oaks into downtown. Um, here we go. Connie Cutrell, Morris Curly Jr., Leonard Firestone, Lee Henderson. Just want to make note Sean Lassiter withdrew. She is running for, uh, Texas six, our House Representative, um, because of the passing of our House Representative. So she just withdrew like maybe today or late yesterday to announce that she was going to run the primary for that. Joseph Lockhart Jr., Michelle Stevens McNeil, Zeb Pent, Irvin T. Thomas, Jake Werman, and Miguel Zamora. It's a lot of people. I imagine, I imagine that by May, this will have whittled itself down. Leonard Firestone does not have a website, but he is the founder of Firestone TX Whiskey. I imagine that, uh, he is probably the front runner because of how much money he has to spend on getting into office. Uh, let's see, really out of all that, only found three websites. Lee Henderson for District seven. Actually gives dates on here, early voting, April 19th through April 27th, last day to apply for mail ballot, April 20th. Doesn't really have much about, but gives an opportunity to donate, volunteer, uh, reach out to him to get to know him better. That's Lee Henderson.org. And Paxton Motherall, uh, great family picture. Click to donate, request a yard sign. Um, okay. His platform is kind of hard to read, but here we go. Lower property taxes, safe neighborhoods, quick street repairs, support local businesses, responsive city services, parks, local homeless programs, support city hall accountability and transparency. I think this, when you read a website like this versus a couple of the other ones that we've been excited about, the difference really is I want specifics on I, like, I don't want this laundry list of buzz terms
Yeah.
Of what you want. Like I want you to pick three to five things that you're really passionate about that you want to do. Because I look at his website and I'm pretty bored. Um, and I don't know anything about him essentially.
Yeah.
That is PaxtonMotherall.com. Um, and then Zeb Pent, um, it looks like, well, I remember he dislinked from a Facebook page. Um, he, I would put in the Brian Bird, uh, quadrant of people, um, just from going through his Twitter. Said, you know, a few, retweeted a few choice things about, uh, COVID that sort of gives you like a frame of reference for where he may fall and about how asymptomatic people are actually healthy people. Um, which we know that's not true. Like that's why we're still in this place. Um,
I love this idea of, of quadrants. We should definitely like do that.
I'm sure that somebody much smarter than us has made a chart of, uh,
Of the quadrants?
Of the quadrants.
For our local officials?
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Okay. So, but here we go. Here's three things. Roads, rooftops, responsibility. You got the three Rs. I, I feel, I've, I'm pretty sure there's an episode of Veep where they talk about the three Rs or maybe the four Rs and she screws them up. Um, but that's what he is about. Roads, rooftops and responsibility. Uh, so that's Zeb Pent, and that's what we found for District seven. District eight, this is my district. I, I think it's your district also, uh, includes a, a big part of Meadowbrook, then wiggles down south between Worth Heights and Stop Six. All the way down almost towards Crowley. Um, currently represented by Kelly Allen Gray. She is running again. She'll be running against Christopher Johnson, Tyrone King, Chris Nettles and Millennium Woods Jr. Um, I'm a fan of Kelly Allen Gray.
Yeah, yeah. But man, what a name, Millennium?
Millennium.
That's so amazing.
Yeah, I'm into that. Uh, so she doesn't on her homepage have an about, she does have a, a really nice what's happening in the district, giving you an update. This is more of just like her website rather than a specific campaign website. But does have opportunity to reach out and meet her, donate, volunteer. Uh, I imagine that she's probably the front runner for reelection here. Um, and then also found one for Chris Nettles. Um, here's a, your homepage, like we have, we have cool views from East Fort Worth from your district. Like, don't include the West Seventh Bridge. Like,
Oh, yeah.
Give me something to represent us. I don't know. Maybe that's just me nitpicking.
No, you got, you know, we got a
I think we have the best views of downtown.
Tell them.
They're just not really used. Um, but man, that's a beautiful family. Uh, four young kids graduated from North Crowley High School. Uh, also attended DBU. Um, he, since 2014, he's owned and operated his own business Haven of Purpose Childcare Center, provides care, education, nutritious, nutritious. Wow. I can't say that word. That word, meals and more to children they're responsible for, part of Purpose Driven Ministries. Which is the place that he's the senior pastor at. Um, rate years they've been an active part of the community, train, or his priorities. Infrastructure around public transportation, affordable housing, maintenance and repair. Economic development, homelessness and the citizens review board, which is something we talked about with Ann Zeta.
That's awesome.
Yeah. He could be another, uh, great guy for the podcast. Um, kind of bunded. He's running against Kelly Allen Gray. I feel like that's the
Well, we just got a lot of amazing people who live in our beautiful district.
We do. Uh, so those are the, the websites we had. And then lastly, District nine, which is another very crowded district as this is Ann Zeta's district. Obviously she's running for mayor, not running for reelection. We have Ricardo Avisha, Elizabeth Beck, Doyle Fine, Darian George, Jordan Mims, Fernando Peralta, Sabrina Renteria, Eric Richardson and Jared Sloan. Fernando Peralta, uh, has a really, really solid website. Um, donate, join him, volunteer. Moved to Fort Worth in 2014 and resides in Rosemont. Serves in the Texas National Guard, president of Last Familias de Rosemont Neighborhood Association, Fort Worth ISD Site-Based Decision Committees, Hemp Hill Corridor Task Force. This guy's super involved in the community. I mean, he seems like a really strong candidate to represent that group of people. Um, so that is FernandoPeralta.com. Elizabeth Beck, mom, veteran lawyer leader, uh, single mom, veteran lawyer and passionate community leader. Sorry, I repeated that twice. Uh, yeah, looks like she went to Iraq, completed her masters in city and regional planning. A and M School of Law, which maybe how she landed in Fort Worth. That's Elizabeth for FortWorth.com. Um, really strong website. It doesn't give a lot of specifics on what she wants to do. It gives a lot of specifics on who she is. Which I think there's two strategies to that. Some people thrive really well on platforms. Some thrive really well on who they are.
I feel like I've seen her, her, like at least a Beck sign around.
Yes, I definitely have.
I don't know if it's her or if it's just, you know, other people, she's in royalty or something and there's some other Bex in the house. But it, that name definitely has been seen on boards.
Which in a long list of candidates, that might be what matters. Uh, Darian George. Priorities, lower property tax burden, help local businesses recover, safe and vibrant neighborhoods, improve early childhood education.
I like these. I like these.
Gives an opportunity to join the team. Um, Fort Worth Neighbor of the Year in 2018. I don't know who awards that or what that means, but he won it.
I would be the worst neighbor ever.
So that's George for FortWorth.com. Uh, and then Eric Richardson. Let's meet Eric. That's Eric, E R I K Richardson, R I C H E R S O N.com. He doesn't, he, he has a little get to know him, but he doesn't have really a platform on his website. But he does have ways to learn about him, reach out to him. Um, strong voice championing safety, streets and small business. One guy went with three Rs, he went with the three S's. Um, and then this guy didn't have a website, but I did want to highlight that Ricardo Avisha is the founder of Hemp Hill No Sevende, um, which we've talked about a few times. So that's him and those are the District nine candidates. Uh, yeah.
Bravo.
That felt, felt like a marathon, but I, I think that's an important.
And, and I think, yeah, and I think it's important too, for people who are trying to get a full landscape of Fort Worth, especially when you spend a year stuck in your house and the only people you see is the people in your neighborhood. And now you kind of get a good diagnosis of the entire landscape. And honestly, where I was very impressed with, it just seems like there's a lot of young talent in Fort Worth.
Yeah.
That is excited to leave. And I'm starting to think this whole old guard stuff, you know, like that's holding up both parties, you know, like I think
Yeah.
There were some clear, uh, high energy and I just hope these people, um, have, you know, have endurance to continue to want to do this because a lot of these sites were awesome. And a lot of these people look like they have the demeanor to really, um, shed some vision that I feel like there was some, some more vision in some of these websites than like the mayoral websites.
Yeah. And this like city councillors get paid like 20, $25,000 a year. Uh, they, they get paid like a part-time job to do a, a more than full-time job. So this is a labor of love. Uh, and, and I feel like just going to the website, seeing who is running gives you a laundry list of people that are passionate about your community. And even if they don't win, are people that if you feel like you can, you align with them, you can rally with to make change for whoever does win.
Love it. Love it. Well, let's go, let's just go to our wins and losses.
Yeah.
And, um, man, it's crazy. It really honestly feels like talking about the snowstorm was a month ago. We did a lot in this episode.
Yeah. Well, and hopefully this is a little bit easier coming back to one episode instead of like little bits and multiple episodes.
That was a good call, Jimmy.
If you only make it, if you only fast forward to your district, we totally understand. Uh, but for those of you that really want to know about the landscape of the city, uh, yeah, I think this was good. Um, I'll start with my win. Black Coffee has gotten a lot of notoriety over the last week as Kirk Franklin
Yeah.
Did a music video there and then that was highlighted on, I think it was national television.
Yeah, yeah.
So that was pretty amazing. I, so like they posted that they were going to be closed. I like an idiot forgot. And I, it was the day that I ran out of coffee beans. And so I placed my online order, went to go to curbside. I was like, oh my gosh, there's a lot of cars here. Uh, and then tried like calling to pick up. Nobody answered. Then Mia called me and was like, oh, hey, like it's cool. You're like, we're still, uh, open, like you can come get it. I was like, oh, cool. But it was a, I mean, it was a sweet setup. Like they, they really went for it. Really awesome to see them highlighted on a national level like this.
Yeah, I know. And I mean, you also saw that, um, with Funky Town Fridge, right? You're seeing
Absolutely.
Kudos. I mean, um, that's what Fort Worth needs. People, people to, uh, show how awesome and unique Fort Worth is.
Yeah. What's your win?
I'm going to sort of save my win to the end because we, we always end with our losses and that was feedback that you guys end on a sad note. Me and Jimmy are very sad people most of the time anyways. At least I am when I read the news. So I apologize, but so I'm going to start with my loss. And I guess it's, I'm just going to bring it back around to, you know, the losses. The loss of lives from, from all this and just like, and then the carelessness from leaders that we elect in Texas. And you know, don't mess with Texas is, is, is just doesn't have enough empathy in that narrative. And, and that is, that's to me, the loss is that, um, we need to really add empathy in our narrative as a state.
Yeah. And even, we never even got to process or like hold people to account for the, the big wreck that happened two Thursdays ago. Like that's crazy. That was only two Thursdays ago. And, you know, that flew out the window in a lot of ways over the last week and having people, having just like these casualty events in the community, uh, is something that we're going to have to process as a, a city and hold people to account to make sure that stuff like this, that the privatization of all of our services is not a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. What do you got for your loss?
For my loss, I will say, um, man, that article that came out about Jerry Jones's company, oil company and the, uh, conference call they were doing CFO on the conference call was bragging about how much money they were making off of this, what a boon it was. I mean, if you, if gritty is your power provider, like people are seeing like $10,000 bills. Um, yeah, I mean, that's a big loss. It's also a big loss for, I mean, I haven't seen Jerry come out and say anything like, yeah, like that was wrong, but like we need to tear this down. Like we need to tear this broken system down that continues to make wealthy people wealthy and people that don't have, have less. And yeah, just that I, I feel like that just flew under the radar with everything else happening. But if you don't support the Dallas Cowboys this coming season, I'm 100% behind you on that for lots of reasons, but add this to the list that their owner was part of celebrating, uh, that all of this is happening.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, I guess my win that we'll end with is just kind of after looking through all those websites, I just, I'm going to reiterate, like check out, uh, your district's leaders who are running because these, these people are pretty impressive. And if you want to find hope, I was sitting here next to Jimmy, looking at these websites. And for me, who's someone who always feels like you're dreaming bigger than most people in your city and you feel like people don't, uh, have enough boldness about this city. I felt a lot of bold people showing up, caring about Fort Worth on those websites. And so if you see any of those people in your life or you know, those people, you know, do what you can donate, you know, what you can, you know, take them to lunch, you know, support a coffee, uh, gathering for your friends can know about them. Because that's, uh, what's going to help Fort Worth change. You know, these local elections are going to be bigger than the crazy national election we were all excited about last year. And so, you know, if you're one of the couple, you know, hundred viewers or whatever we got going on in this episode, realize like the ripple effect is you also having conversations with people about, uh, these people in your community who look like they're out there wanting to do real work.
Yeah. And I mean, this was really sparked by, I was having a conversation with somebody, uh, through Twitter, realized I had a lot of my districts screwed up, uh, didn't know like who was running in what place and was just like, you know what? Like we need to talk about this. Um, and so if you have made it all the way through, thank you for listening. Uh, we, we really hope you're okay. Let us know if there's any way that we can help you, uh, help be a voice for you, anything you want to talk about, and we would love to, to highlight it.
Yes. Awesome. Well, take care everyone and look forward to see you on the next episode.